This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Executive Budget Proposal Meeting for March 23rd, 2021. Please take note that the Board of Education of the Brighton Central School District in response to the continuing emergency circumstances caused by the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic and consistent with the New York State Governor's executive orders, will conduct its scheduled public meeting tonight, March 23rd, 2021, beginning here at 7:00 PM. It will be held via Zoom through the Zoom webinar feature on our district website. If you are a member of the public watching this evening and wish to offer a comment during public comment section that we'll come up to in just a second, please use the chat feature at the bottom of your screen and your name and address, and we will call on you shortly to ask your question, make a statement. You're also welcome to contact the board or to contact Dr. McGowan through our district email, which is listed on the webs on our webpage for each of us. Also, you are, please feel free to contact Board Clerk and District Clerk Kim Lanza-Fame, and her contact information, her email address and her telephone number and extension are also listed on the website. So you may contact us that way also if you have any information that you'd like to share with the board or if you have a question that you would like to ask. We will be recording the meeting and the minutes will be made available online upon review and approval by the Board of Education. And as with all of our Board of Education meetings, if you go to the district website and click on the Board of Education tab, Meetings and Agendas, the agenda for tonight's meeting, March 23rd, is listed there and all of the backing material for the meeting is there. Additionally, anything that is updated this evening will be added to the website so that you will have access to all of the material that we discuss. We're going to discuss budget proposal this evening, and there is a separate section on the website which has all of our current budget information along with historical perspective on our budgets year over year. So at this point, Dr. McGowan, do we have anyone in the chat who wishes to ask a question or make a comment?
We do not.
Okay, then we will continue to move on. I will ask a motion, please, from the board to amend our agenda further. We want to drop, if you will, table item number nine, approval of seeker resolution for our upcoming capital project. We want to table that item for, at this point in time, we'll bring it back at a future meeting. So with that change, may we have a motion, please, to approve the agenda as amended further?
So moved.
Second.
By Larry and seconded by Karen. All in favor? Any opposed? That's seven in favor and none opposed. Thank you. May we have a motion, please, for approval of the March 9, 2021 minutes?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Andrea and seconded by Sue. Does anyone have anything to add to those minutes, corrections, deletions, anything that hasn't been previously sent to Kim? And then all in favor of that approval?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's seven in favor and none opposed. As we mentioned, tonight's meeting topic, the main topic is our executive budget proposal, and I will turn it over to Dr. McGowan to discuss the executive budget proposal for the 2021-2022 school year. Dr. McGowan.
Thank you. I am also very glad to be joined this evening, as always, by Mr. Lamo, who will go through a few of the slides for us also. So let me start out by saying to you that tonight's presentation highlighted there in green. You'll be glad to know, I know people will be upset that we're not doing every line item tonight, but this is specifically meant to update you on what we've already presented and where we are right now based on the one-house proposals from the State Assembly and the State Senate, who are now in negotiation with the executive over the next steps. In the budget process, there should be a final agreement by April 1st. But this significantly impacts us because remember, the governor proposed no additional state aid in the foundation aid area and several other problematic proposals in his package that we'd like to go through with you tonight. So the Senate proposed in their one-house proposal, right, so there's three entities that are negotiating. They proposed a minimum per district increase of 2% in state aid. That would be, or 60% as a base for foundation aid. These are both highlighted in green on both sides of your screen to point out that the Assembly also proposed a 60% floor for foundation aid or 2% increase, whichever is great. Now, for us, this is key because we are only at 50% of our state aid. That 60% floor, if that does come to fruition, that 10% is an additional $1.6 million. The round numbers, remember, we get 16 million, should be getting 16 million, we are only getting 8 million, short by 50%, sounds like monopoly money, no dead serious, that's what it is. The additional 10% is $1.6 million. That's a significant change for us. It is a relief. It is sunshine on a cloudy day. We are moving towards potentially this problem being solved over time. If you go to the next bullet on both sides of your screen, both the Senate and the Assembly have also proposed a three-year phase-in of foundation aid to ensure that over the next three years, we become fully funded towards that 100%. Now, these types of proposals have been part of the conversation in the past and not come to ultimate resolution and ultimate inclusion in the budget process. There seems to be, though, a significant amount of energy around this, attention to it. And we should pause to say for a moment that State Senator Jeremy Cooney, Assembly Member Sarah Clark, our representatives have been vigorously advocating in this area, proposed actually legislation for 70% floor, and they've pushed this conversation forward and been very, very helpful. So we feel better about the possibility that this will happen, which is why we're willing to make some adjustments preliminarily in our proposal tonight, in advance of our proposal after they adopt the budget, and we can make a final proposal to you in April. Third item, rejects consolidation of expense-based aid. Those three items at the top are the most important for our community to pay attention to. The expense-based items were transportation aid, textbook aid, capital expenses, BOSI's aid, the types of things we get reimbursed for the following year after we spend the money. So in other words, this is meant to level the playing field. If a district in the North Country has their kids 50 miles on a bus one way and then on the way back, they obviously have a pretty significant expense, so they should get aided on those miles to level the playing field. Every district has these types of expenses, us included. We spent the money on, for example, transportation because the state said, "We will reimburse you to a certain percentage of that. Here's the deal." The governor proposed, "No, no, we're not going to do that anymore. We're just going to have a formula, not based on your actual expense, but a formula that would drive the aid." Look how well that formula concept has worked out with foundation aid, right? So this is a problem for us, the idea that that can be politically manipulated on an annual basis, capped if one grows further or another. These are artificial mechanisms to achieve a political end as opposed to the practical need to give money where money has been spent. So both the Senate and the Assembly have rejected that. The other items are more complicated around the format of the state budget and the way that the governor has proposed certain ways of counting star money against districts. That's the next piece, this local district funding adjustment. The next piece on both sides of your screen is around CARES Act money from December that the, both the Senate and the Assembly supported the money being put towards schools, being inclusive of that federal money. However, on the bottom left-hand side of the Senate proposal, you'll notice a very significant point made by the Senate that the new federal money, the new COVID Act money should not supplant state funding. That's very important. We expect that to also be followed through on, and the Assembly seems to be behind that as well in their proposal. They also have proposed, the Senate did, raising the fund balance limit to 8%, which would be important to manage funds that would be coming from the federal government. We're currently capped at 4%. The Assembly has done the same. They have a different number of years that they have proposed that for, the Senate being five, the Assembly three. So looked at a little bit differently, but essentially the top three bullets are what we need people to focus on and the board to understand as part of the proposal. We, you've gotten a lot of this information, you know it well. Those are the three keys, 60% fully funded over three years, and expense-based aids would not be consolidated, and that, those are key financial figures. The middle one about the fully funded over three years is also key to consider and keep in mind when we think about potential taking of risk in using longer-term financing strategies, knowing that we will grow over time and get more towards 100%. Potentially over time, being able to give some relief to property taxpayers, potentially being able to grow program, potentially being able to address some of the fundamental challenges we've had over the last several years. That is where both of these proposals are at. We're very excited about that and relieved that we're at that point. There's a thousand miles to go between here and there, but right now, that's the current status. Lou's going to address the next few slides for us.
Sure. Thanks, Dr. McGowan. So as we're unpacking it, trying to look at specific numbers to Brighton, first one that the superintendent highlighted is the 60% minimum foundation aid. So that nets us $1.6 million. We're just under 50% proposed. That would get us $1.6 million. So as we talked about with the Audit Committee and laying out multi-year financing strategies, that would allow us to, one, reduce the reliance on fund balance and reserves. So as we look at the options in the upcoming slides, you know, we looked at, just in the previous meeting, we looked at the pie chart and how much is local taxes. So it's not only the property tax levy, but it's the reserves and appropriated fund balance. So we're trying to whittle away at our reliance on reserves and fund balance. This gives us an immediate opportunity to do that. The other thing we talked about is funding cliffs over the next couple of years and full-day K. While there is funding for that, it's, it slides off. So if we budget for a portion of that right now, we can smooth out the impact over that, and this allows us to build in full-day K as part of our regular ongoing recurring expenses and having it funded with recurring revenues. So there's an opportunity to do that if that comes to fruition. And then, as Dr. McGowan said, there's also an opportunity to reinstate some of the programs that have had an adverse impact on scheduling and has taken opportunities away from our kids, specifically at the middle school level. So there is an opportunity to reinvest some of that in program. If full foundation aid is to be fully phased in, and that's, that's a heavy lift for us. That's $8 million over a three-year period. If you recall, when foundation aid came out, it was supposed to be phased in over the first three years, and then they artificially put in caps and ceilings on it, so no district was getting so much. That's what put us in the position that we are today. But if they were to honor that and fully fund us, the foundation aid that's due per the formula, it would generate $8 million over a three-year period. The Board of Education has been very clear, so has the superintendent, about using that for property tax relief. We have one of the highest tax burdens in Monroe County. This provides an opportunity to shift that reliance on local dollars and shift it back to, shift it back to state dollars and leveraging statewide income, not just local property values. And it also provides some funding for incremental costs and mandates and contractual costs that we've talked about and looking at our escalation factors in the key areas where we have very little influence over. It does provide a new funding stream, unrestricted funding stream, to meet those obligations going forward. And then the key part that the superintendent touched on is the elimination of a local district funding adjustment. So $3.2 million was supposed to come to us in federal revenues, and then they offset that with a reduction. When that was done back in 2008, that created the gap elimination adjustment. So when the federal money, the ARAM money fell off after a first couple of years, that gap elimination adjustment kept going on for the next eight years, and the state tried to slowly eliminate the cut that they were imposing on the formula each year. So if both the Senate and the Assembly reject that, that's, that's a huge, huge win and provides us a little bit more stability, knowing and predictability, would not having to realize how much they're going to artificially cut to balance, to balance other statewide issues. So that, again, gives us the predictability, but it also allows us to really use the new federal dollars with the American Recovery Investment Act for supplemental services. And I know the superintendent will talk more of that, but we can lay out very specific program budgets with, with the understanding that there are funding cliffs. So it allows for infusion of cash programs, projects, you know, whatever the priority is, but those will be programmed for and accounted for separately. So we can, so we never have an unplanned funding cliff, what puts even more pressure on the property tax cap and local property taxes. So when we look at that, then, on this slide, this is a couple of options. We've seen option A or executive budget A before. That's what's been presented at the last Board of Education meeting. So we looked at 5.3% spending, a portion of that is capital, a portion of that is operations. And we look at the revenue sources. So with, if the, the one-house bills, again, get, get through the executive negotiations, this is the reallocation of money that, that I would recommend to the superintendent for discussion by the Board of Education. It's reducing the full-day K conversion aid, essentially budgeting for half of it, so we can wean ourselves off of it at a much flatter slope, reduce the reliance on fund balance, and that's at $3.75 million down to 2.9. So we would have a fixed appropriate fund balance of 2.9, which our history shows that we've been managing our risk provisions on the expense side to offset that. So I feel confident that we can match those expenses with the reliance on fund balance. And again, provides not as much property tax relief this year, but it does allow us to fund full-day K within the property tax cap with recurring, recurring revenue sources. So I would still maintain the property tax levy this year and look for property tax relief in the next, next couple of years with the fully funding, with fully funded foundation aid. And so the last piece of it that I didn't have the numbers for at the last budget presentation, but was, is the, excuse me, the capital project. So the scope that was presented at the last Board of Education meeting, campus construction has done our pre-bid estimates for that, and the roof work at TCMS was much more significant than I initially had thought when they, when they really dug into where we're having issues. So the total project budget is $5.1 million, just over $5.1 million. That is more than I'm comfortable recommending to draw down our, our capital reserve. I still would like to leverage that for future capital projects. So what I'm proposing at this point is leveraging the low interest rate bond market, use our capital reserves to essentially offset any local tax impact. So we would go out with a zero incremental cost, incremental levy impact, but we would have to do some financing or over the next couple of years, as our maximum cost allowances reset for other buildings, we can draw portions down more of our, our capital reserve. But this is proposed to be a zero, zero impact on the tax levy, leveraging state aid, state building aid, and our capital reserves. With that, I'll turn it back over to Dr. McGowan.
Excellent. Appreciate that. So really, the summary to all of this is in three places. One, we've provided a proposal that does not cut programs, adds full-day kindergarten, stays under the cap, and again, leverages long-term financing strategies if we need to. The biggest piece being, remember, going back to a smaller amount of the unappropriated fund balance being used and make sure that we have a recurring revenue then for full-day K, which is ideal. The Assembly and Senate, one-house proposals in, 60% perhaps as a floor, which is a big deal, $1.6 million more. Our suggestion is then to reinstate sixth-grade foreign language and reduce reliance on reserves in the full-day conversion aid, those financing strategies in order to support the program. And on the right-hand side, keep thinking about, and we'll keep talking to you about COVID relief funding, the best ways to leverage that. Think of the focus, what the requirements are, which we will learn over time, and again, use that over time, not, not, not to be squandered, but to think about that as a transformational opportunity. So really, for us, you know, thinking about the pandemic money and this entire budget, it communicates our priorities. We've spoken very clearly about the need to address property taxes. We get that. But to think about program implementation and being able to reinstate sixth-grade foreign language, really focusing on programs for kids, full-day kindergarten programs for kids, that's really entirely what this is about and these spending proposals are about. We will not create a cliff. It's a really sound budget in that sense. We have revenues to support the programs that we're talking about implementing, and we're talking about supplementing programs with COVID relief funds as opposed to supplanting them. So we'll be thinking deeply about coming back to you with proposals when we're clear on what the requirements are and exactly what those dollar amounts are, and look at opportunities to transform our work, but don't create obligations after that funding runs out that would have to be sustained by the levy and by the general fund. We'd really look at one-time targeted programs or purchasing that can be managed long-term or not, right? So for example, if we have to, a remote program next year, it requires the purchase of certain hardware that we won't need long-term, so we won't have to replace it over and over again. Those would be the kinds of purchases we'd be very targeted about. We are thinking initially that what that would be are programs around mental health, thinking about learning loss, professional development to help leverage the money for a long-term impact, eliminating barriers for students instead of buying barriers. Like to point out to everybody, we've brought this up before, but the CDC reiterated on Friday the lack of quality and scientific support for the use of any kind of barriers and has eliminated that from any of their guidance. So we'd be not talking about buying barriers with COVID relief money, but rather eliminating barriers for kids. How do you break down those walls for kids and make sure that they have access and equity in all the work that we're doing? And think about infrastructure. So those items, for example, like cameras, lavalier mics, the types of things that would enhance a remote program for those students that will need that going forward, will be a part of it. And we really need to think about this notion of an equity lens in that conversation. We recognize members of our community have been disproportionately impacted by this situation, so we should have a disproportionate response. In other words, it will be different for people, and we need to think about groups in our community and the ways in which they've been impacted differently, different students, different levels, different areas, et cetera. We have to go beyond just the notion of lifting up and consider the barriers that we have in place of the types of things that are preventing kids from taking full advantage of the program. And as we move out of the pandemic, how can we make changes to our system to do that? We have a transformational opportunity. We need to stay focused on our values and on this notion of moving to a place that's much more equitable and inclusive. Let's be collaborative in that decision-making. We want to engage a lot of people in this conversation. Find out what our needs are and go out and ask and then work with a lot of stakeholders within the district to figure out the best way to leverage those funds. We're looking at the potential for some long-term change, but we don't want to create a long-term problem. That funding cliff will be the key. So it can't be that we create programs and positions that we can't sustain unless we're able to prune back in other areas and shift programs entirely over that course of time. So just a few ideas initially, what we know right now and what we will be thinking about as we go into it. The next steps in our budget process to keep in mind, the state will adopt a budget by April 1st, presumably that is their deadline. We will adjust then and finalize the proposal to give to you and ask that you adopt that budget on the 13th. We will have a budget hearing on May 11th, and then the budget vote, of course, on May 18th. Any questions at all that we can answer from the board at this point?
Board members, does anyone have anything that they'd like to ask further of Lou or Kevin on what we've just seen?
Using your crystal ball, do you think they'll be ready on April 1st?
Yes.
Okay.
I do. I do. I will say there's a significant number of issues that is holding a lot of things up in the state right now, largely revolving on the governor, his behavior and his personal situation. But I am still of the mind that they will adopt an on-time budget.
And it, you know, Kevin and to Lou, both of you, thank you very much, you know, for the presentation. And to the members of the public who may be watching us, this is information that's been shared with the board as we continue to build a budget and continue to discuss options. Where we are right now, you know, we're, we potentially are in a very good position, as has been outlined. We've made plans for multiple scenarios, and once we know, as we know definitively from the state budget, and then how the COVID relief money, specifically how much, how it can be used, all of the, you know, parameters around that, over the period of time that it can be used, we'll go ahead and make adjustments as we go. One thing I wanted to highlight, it's, it's, it kind of gets lost a little bit in the conversation, but I did want to bring it back if I could for a moment. When we passed, when we proposed to the public now, four years ago, the plan to begin our major facilities upgrade throughout the entire district, which is resulting in Council Rock being completely rebuilt and hopefully completed this summer and be ready to open as a full, full-day K and program and a new school. We discussed with the community the need to do that, and then down the road, we would have the ability to take advantage of the debt service that was then baked in our budget. And I think what Lou showed tonight in his, the slide on the capital project, the upcoming capital project that we are going to place on this year's ballot, is exactly the first example of that. You know, utilizing some resources from reserves, but then utilizing borrowing judiciously so that it will have zero additional tax impact on residents. The other thing that we haven't talked about hardly at all is we've taken advantage of tremendously low interest rates and our borrowing costs up till now have been a great deal lower than were projected. And to continue to take advantage of that in the bond market is to our, is really to the long-term betterment of our situation in terms of debt service and the ability to do more through reserve funds and the ability to recoup funds. So, so thank you, Lou, and to all of our individuals that we utilize to help us guide these decisions as we go down the road. So I think that also we should be excited for the ability that hopefully we'll have to begin building again, starting with sixth-grade foreign language, to put that back in at the middle school, hopefully. If the state budget comes through the way we believe it will and with the COVID money that we believe is coming. So that's an exciting time for all of us in Brighton to be looking forward and thinking about the opportunity to continue to prune, to grow, to, to continue to bring forward from our teaching staff and our leadership initiatives that we, that we want to, you know, tackle and, and add to our program. So I think we're hopefully on the cusp of a lot of great news all the way around as we move forward. So thank you both. Thank you, everybody that continues to work on the budget on a day-by-day basis. As Dr. McGowan said, three weeks from tonight, we meet again, and at that point in time, all things being as we believe they will roll out, we would expect to adopt a budget on that, at that meeting that evening. So, Board members, anything further, any further questions, comments, anything to add? Okay, then thank you very much. We will continue to move along. A motion, please, for approval of item number six on our budget. That's the approval of the notice of the annual meeting, budget vote, and election.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Larry and seconded by Christina. This is the legal requirement, the legal notice that is required at this point in time to be approved by us. It will be published. That basically sets out the annual budget vote, the election for the board, dates, times, and that type of thing. And it's legalese and needs to be officially done and posted. So I don't know if there's any further question. It's pretty straightforward.
Eric, just a question for Lou. Location is listed on there.
Yes, sir. So that is a change this year.
Pardon me?
That, yes, that is. That's part of the, the resolution.
Right. So I do want to point out to the community.
Thank you, Kevin. I forgot about that.
No, it's no problem. So the location change for this year is that the budget vote and Board of Education election will be held at Central Office on Monroe Avenue, not at the high school. It's important for people to know that, a couple of reasons. One, accessibility to the building has always been a challenge. It's been managed. But we believe Central Office will provide more accessibility for our community, but particularly given COVID restrictions and the fact that we do not have visitors in the building at this point. We believe this is the best way, while we continue to operate and think very carefully about our COVID protocols in each building, to, to honor that and continue to have a vote in the safest way that we can possibly do that. We believe we can manage that better in the Central Office Building. We will designate plenty of parking, make that as easy as possible for our community, and also point out that we have elections through the Board of Elections, regular municipal elections in the Central Office Building every single voting season, every November. So that, that's very common for us to be able to provide that accessibility and to set up that way, and we can make that work very, very well. We believe in that. It'll be better for the community and ultimately better for our kids as well.
Thank you, Kevin. It's a great point. We had discussed that earlier, and I had forgotten that that was included in that notice. And we will, we will certainly, we'd be gone now, but we will continue to very widely and very often advise members of the Brighton School District community on voting procedures, voting location. We will shortly be advising in more detail the ability, the guidance that we have been given thus far, and Kim, Kim or Lou, correct me if I'm wrong, but thus far, we will hold a vote in person, socially distant, all precautions. But residents will be able to request an absentee write-in style ballot merely by stating COVID-19, I believe, is not even maybe a request. I'm not sure. But if you wish to vote by mail, you will be allowed to do so, and we will clearly articulate all of the details around that very shortly. I'm correct, right?
Yes. Yes, absolutely.
Can we just take another look at that? The the last paragraph of that, I think the address was not changed for the in the last paragraph, but could somebody else take a look at that?
Let me see. I went beyond it. Let me pull it up again here. It looks like we put the propositions. Yeah, you're right, Christina. Thank you. On the first page. The bottom paragraph.
I see that.
So let's do this. Let's, let me re- re-ask the question. A motion to approve the notice with the change that the paragraph at the bottom of page one that begins and notices hereby given with a change in the location and address to match the location and address of 12 Corners Elementary School listed up in the upper portion of that page. Correct? Everybody? Does that seem accurate?
Yes, that's, that will be correct.
Do you need a motion, right? So moved?
So a mo- motion by Karen?
Second.
Second by Andrea, Christina and Larry. Okay, so we have that motion properly done now. And with that change as we stated, thank you, Christina, you're right, at the bottom of that page, it's still where the propositions were listed here that. So I think looks good, the rest of it, correct? Everybody? Okay. And then again, back, we will, we will be publicizing very clearly, widely, often voting procedures. The ability for any resident who wishes to do so to vote by mail, that will be provided. And otherwise will be voting in person. Socially distant, safely, safety precautions with parking at the Central Office. Legally known as 12 Corners Middle School or 12 Corners Elementary School. All right, stop now. Anything further before we call the question? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you. Thank you very much. Onward we go. All right, let me see. Next up, we have a motion, please. What we'll do, let me, let me read this. A motion, please, for item number eight. To approve the resolution for Monroe One Bosi's annual election and budget vote. We can, we can call, we can move the ballot and then we will vote individually for the five. We need to vote individually for the five candidates and the administrative budget. So let's, let's ask for the motion to approve the resolution and ballot as has been given to us. And then we'll move to the individual votes that we need to take, just to keep, make sure we do that as according to the procedure that they've outlined. So a motion, please, for that resolution, approval of that resolution?
So moved.
Andrea is seconded by Sue. And again, these are the, we are part of Monroe One Bosi. For those that watch, that are watching us, that involves nine component districts, essentially the east side of Monroe County. And we are voting to approve the administrative budget as we do every year. That material's been provided to us. Additionally, there are five candidates, one candidate from each of five individual districts that are up for election this year. And that does include yours truly as the Brighton representative. So we need to go ahead and then I would ask, please, we'll just call the vote. We did, we have the motion in play. So all those in favor of seat one for the Wester Rondecoy candidate?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's seven in favor, none opposed and none abstaining. Seat number two in favor of the Fairport Central School District candidate?
Aye.
That's seven in favor, none opposed and none abstaining also. Seat number three, the Webster Central School District candidate, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seat number three, seven in favor, none opposed, no abstentions. Seat number four, the East Rondacoit Central School District candidate, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That's seven in favor, none opposed and no abstentions. And seat number five, the Brighton Central School District candidate, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's seven in favor and none opposed and no abstentions. Then the administrative budget vote, all in favor of the administrative budget has been presented to us?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. There's seven in favor and none opposed and no abstentions on that also. We are complete in that item. Thank you very much. Our consent agenda this evening, a motion, please, for approval of the consent agenda?
Almost.
Second.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Larry. We have two gifts tonight that we would like to acknowledge, as is our, as is our practice. And these are two gifts recently awarded from the Brighton Education Fund. One in the amount of $919 to French Road Elementary School. The purchase of 23 mini wind turbine kits. And also a gift, the amount of 27, $2,750 to the Brighton High School Alpine Ski Team. For the purchase of 16 pairs of roller blades for dry surface training. So we thank the Brighton Education Fund and those that sit on that board. And especially those that contribute for the Brighton Education Fund on a yearly basis. So we thank everyone involved with that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Dr. McGowan, anything further for our meeting this evening?
No, just board members have a link to executive session via Zoom in their inbox of their email.
Thank you. Board members.
And that, thank you. No, I just want to say one more time to Jeremy Cooney and Sarah Clark for their support. And we are making progress in the budget picture. Again, there's a long way to go. But it is positive news and I think we should feel good about that. As we approach the end of the state budget process, we'll watch it carefully and keep you posted.
You frequently call up for, fight for Brighton too. I appreciate that because they're doing.
No, you're right. Thank you, Larry. I didn't mean to, to, to miss that either. They, Claire McLaughlin and Miranda McDavid Clay were on a a webinar on Sunday with Jeremy Cooney, Sarah Clark, myself, Bill Malley to talk about state aid. Wonderful, wonderful advocates that continue to push that conversation forward and we deeply appreciate that. So thank you for mentioning that. And in terms of reopening, our community should continue to watch for an update tomorrow, our COVID update with any information we have. No big, big announcements coming tomorrow, I promise you that. And on Friday, again, in our e-news, anything we know, we will share. We continue to vigorously plan and hope that the state will act quickly relative to CDC guidance that was put out last Friday. And that is the switch that needs to be flipped. So while we await that, we will be ready to go when that happens here in Brighton. And we're anxious to to see that happen, but it requires the state or other public health officials to make some decisions. That's it.
Thank you very much, Kevin. We appreciate that and much, much more to come on a nearly daily basis, as you say. So we go from there. Board members, any other items of business this evening while we're in session? And well, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss legal matters with regard to district property.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Christina, all in favor? Any opposed? That's seven in favor and none opposed. We will adjourn to executive session. And thank you very much, everyone, for tuning, tuned in and joined us this evening. Have a wonderful evening.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.